Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 8th, 2024 meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have Lakeville, uh, Lake Cam recording tonight. Is anyone else here recording? Hearing none. I will move on to the first agenda item, which is 37 Cross Street, David Morrissey, to discuss possible items not completed on the Bella Way subdivision plan. Possible vote. Mr. Morrissey, if you could.
Good evening. Kathy here? You Kathy? I feel like you're my pen pal. How's everybody?
Good, how are you?
Did you get a chance to look over the documents?
Yes.
Did you notice any, did you drive by this time?
So I did, I did drive by today. So I, I noticed, um, I saw the landscaping that you're talking about because it looked like the grass was about up to my knees. At least.
If you were on a ladder, maybe.
And then I did see, um, going in the back, there's definitely no fence that was ever installed. There's also a storage container. It looks like some building materials. I'm not sure who those belong to. Um, and I saw all of the fencing that appears to be in place still, as you showed in your pictures. So what, what I'd like to do is compile a list of items that you're satisfied with and we're going to send it over to the zoning enforcement officer and ask that he send a letter to the developer. Um, or if, if the storage container belongs to one of the residents, he'll address it to the resident instead. So, um, what I have is, so I'm not sure about the lawn because I did review, we saw that HOA, the covenant, et cetera. I didn't see any lawn maintenance in there. So I don't know if that's something that we can, um, address, but we can include it in the list.
Are you talking about the, the, in the swale? Or are you talking about the house?
Yeah, I thought it was the house that you were talking about.
Uh, that, when we went through this process, um, Jamie, isn't it, assured us that there'd be privacy between my property line and that street. I don't think overgrown weeds is privacy. He couldn't produce any of the diagrams the night that I asked him, but we were assured there would be some type of privacy along that swale, um, at least between the two houses. You know, obviously back where the wood stand.
Are you saying between your house and, um, number two?
Bella Road.
Bella, it's number two of Bella?
I think it's number two.
Oh, okay.
There's a 10-foot section.
Yeah.
That runs the length of my side yard.
Yeah.
Actually runs the entire length of the yard. We were assured there'd be some type of privacy from, you know, basically the wooded area up to the street, whether it was shrubs and landscape. But Jamie's the one that guaranteed that. Um, if I had known this is what it would have been, I would have forced them to put a fence or something in.
Yeah, because I only saw the fence that was shown on the, that you, I think you circled it even in one of the emails.
That fence, you know, they didn't finish that. I don't know how this got signed off on. But there's, clearly there wasn't any oversight.
So, so what they did is they released the lots, or planning board released the lots, in exchange for the $11,000 to be held until it's completed. So obviously that's four years ago we're talking. I know prices have even increased. It seems like a low amount at this point even.
So there was a landscape plan?
So this is what was filed. I, I think if I look at the waivers, I think street trees was a waiver though. So that's where I think we run into a little bit of an issue because, um, yeah, street lights and trees. So I don't know where it showed, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. If, if you're aware of where it showed in the covenant plans somewhere that there was supposed to be that barrier?
I'm a resident, you guys work for me. I don't have to dig this stuff up.
Well.
This, this is your responsibility. There's been no oversight. I've been emailing back to her with her for four years.
I know, I know you've gone through, I know you've gone through a lot. You were dealing with the prior chair.
This is a waste of my time.
The prior planner. I'm just trying to help you correct this issue.
It's not mine to correct, it's yours to correct. There was no oversight on this building project. None whatsoever. They violated all the covenants that you guys had laid forth back in August of 2020.
So I did see, I know you're saying there was no oversight. I don't disagree, but we did have an email from the town planner at the time saying that he had gone out and he, he approved the release basically that. So, so I, I know that it wasn't done to your satisfaction. I'm just trying to help you get it corrected. But if it doesn't show it, my problem is if it doesn't show it somewhere that it makes it enforceable, I, we don't have any enforcement.
I understand that. But at the very least, this should be kept up. It shouldn't be overgrown with weeds. It's a disgrace. And it's not raising property values here in town, it's lowering them. I had a real to tell me that.
So, I mean, we can add it, privacy up to the street between the houses, but I don't know where it is in what.
You'd have to ask the architect. He's the one that told me.
So Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, so the.
Not only did he tell me in one of the meetings, he told me when he came out to the site to look at the flooding problem.
And so, so you agreed the fence in the back portion also is missing?
It's not there.
The storage container with the building materials?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's there. Uh, right now vegetation covers it, but in the winter I can see it.
And the storage container's been there the entire length of the project?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, it's been four years. I, I don't know. I hadn't put it down on a calendar when it arrived.
The silt fencing, you had mentioned that.
Yeah, I mean, the silt fencing is, it's not even serving a purpose at this point, other than just looks terrible.
Are you still having issues with drainage?
I am. I have video showing the water pouring through that swale they built through the silt fence onto my property.
It's just one swell?
One swell, yep. And unfortunately, when they started to clear cut the property, they forgot to, um, create the swell and we had a good storm that caused a significant amount of damage.
Okay, what else is there that you want me to add to this list?
Um, I think that covers the biggest thing. All the biggest things.
So the privacy up to the street between the houses, and that was per your conversation with Jamie from ZCE. Uh, the fence is, was not installed.
Yeah, I mean.
The storage container, the silt fencing remaining, the drainage issues, um, is that everything?
I don't think there were any trees replanted either, left out of the, uh.
So I did look. It's hard to tell because there are trees there. I can't tell what part.
I think there were more on.
Yeah, because it's.
Thirty, thirty-nine, uh, the neighbors back property, because they've got two lots. I don't care about that. They don't want trees replanted, but it wasn't done.
It wasn't?
I don't think so.
So, because what I could see was the drainage easement right here, and that's where the fence was supposed to be. And there was no fence. And it was all grown in. And it does look like there's like a decent amount of wooded area between maybe that line and your line, or in your property?
Well, my property essentially follows that silt line. It's only about two or three feet over, and it goes all the way back to the silt fence in the back, just about where that drainage is, where the fence should be. Um, and then obviously goes straight across. But I think the replanting of trees was supposed to happen on the other side.
Yeah, it was supposed to be.
It doesn't impact me.
It was supposed to start about 90 feet. I think that's 90 feet down, which I can't tell if that storage container is in that area or not because I didn't get out and measure it. So, um, but it did look like it was wooded, but the trees were not planted? Because I think reading through the minutes, it said that it was a nursery. They were going to try to leave the trees and move them.
I don't think that ever happened. I don't, I don't know for sure.
Okay. So you don't want to include that one? That one's not an issue?
It's not. Really, it's the hundred feet between the street and the property line and either keeping it clean, planting some abovites for privacy. I don't know. But it's going to be kept up. As it is now, I mow a portion of that up to the silt fence, just because I don't want people thinking it's my yard.
Hi, Jack. Okay, so we've got the privacy up to the street between the houses, um, per your conversation with Jamie from ZCE, the fence not installed, the storage container with building materials, silt fencing remaining, drainage issues.
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. So.
You mentioned you had a video of the drainage. Can you send that to us?
I can. It might take me a bit. I've got a lot of photographs and video and.
I think it's an older one, right? Is it older?
Probably. You probably saw it. Well, actually, I don't know if I sent it.
I may have been copied on an email a while, like it wasn't this year. I want to say it was like.
Oh, no, this was, um.
A year ago.
October of.
Because I think you were dealing with the prior chair, so.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, oh, God.
But it's still a perpetual, sorry, it's still a perpetual problem, right?
Yes.
But I think they did go out and try to work something out with you, right? No? Or they didn't?
He came out and then he, um, agreed to do something. I got a letter from, um, somebody's attorney.
Oh.
Said basically saying that there were micro depressions or whatever.
Okay. All right, well, we can send this over to the zoning enforcement and ask him, um, you know, to send a letter and address these issues.
I've got no problem with the people that live there. They, they're quiet. Um, but obviously some of the things that were supposed to happen never did.
Right. Yeah, and that's never a good thing to hear.
Well, I'm not the only resident that suffered because of this two back hill experience and more things, so.
Did, did anybody else want to speak to this? Did anyone else have an issue?
No, I mean, this impacts me the most.
Right.
Yeah, doesn't impact them at all.
All right.
Yeah. But I appreciate your time.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. And do, we want to take, we have possible vote. Do we want to take a vote to send this over to zoning enforcement?
Make a motion to send the, um, items over to zoning enforcement for Bella Way, 37 Cross Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. Item number two, public hearings, seven o'clock, modification of site plan review, five Harding Street, upon application for modification to a site plan review previously approved, to change from one large building to six smaller buildings, site layout and apparatuses changed to accommodate new layout. Possible vote.
Good evening. Uh, I'm John Kelly, the applicant. Um, just wanted to follow up on a few items that we had, uh, talked about at the last hearing. Uh, so one of the questions, some of the neighbors were here and there was a question about distances between, uh, the buildings. And we were setting those things back, uh, to the, uh, you know, just, I guess by chance, by Bella Way and by, uh, Cross Street just tonight. Um, so we just heard about that. Um, so again, just, you know, we were a lot of, I guess, guessing the last time, but I actually had distances from Google Maps and Google Earth. So the distances are 583 feet, basically two football fields from this location, 403 feet from this location, and then 469 feet from this location. So where every distance from the closest buildings is over a football field, um, so I, you know, that, you know, to us was, um, you know, a pretty far distance. There's also a lot of trees, um, in that area as well, where the clearing is over here. Um, and then this area here is where the development is. So, you know, this, to us, it seemed like there was a pretty good buffer there, so.
And I think we had a couple members that drove out.
You and I took a little field trip over there.
We did. We actually, uh, yeah, went around, uh, the Cross Street section over by Bella Way, just to kind of get a sense as to the surrounding neighbors and what they were seeing. And we did see a lot of added tree coverage, which was very good.
I think so. The buffer for you.
Right.
I think it's good.
And is it a lot of evergreens as well? It's not just deciduous?
Correct, yeah. So pine, a lot of pine and.
Right, there's a lot, there's a lot of pine. It's a lot of like low growth pine too, so that's all filling in as well. So I, I think it's going to create a pretty nice buffer sound, everything else. And again, and, you know, and just in that point too, with the distances and stuff, I know one of the questions was also just talking about the, um, the photometric. There were a few follow-ups that we needed to do. So we had a photometric, we submitted it. Um, and we've, we've done, um, the lighting consultant that we were working with, um, came back and gave us parameters, you know, uh, you know, just to, for, for context, I guess. A car dealership's on a 100-foot candle, a, a shopping mall is at 80-foot candle, a office building is at, say, 60-foot candle and all these. He gave us all these numbers that basically, you know, just to put things in context. And, and we're down to like one foot candle. I mean, we're, we're as low as you can go. And he obviously, he said basically, I don't even know why we're even, you know, he's like, you're not even lighting the place. So, so we tried to do, we kept cutting it back down. And then he had certain, um, you know, wall packs on the back of the buildings. You know, even if it's cut off for the property line, we basically, you know, pushed it to the front of the building, to the sides, and basically are doing really downlights. So we're trying to really, to minimize any, any lighting out there. I mean, this area in here, even to the middle, is at zero. I mean, we're, we have no coverage whatsoever in here. But again, if we throw big floodlights and things like that, or did, you know, he had other ideas where we could throw off the, off the roofs and, and, you know, still have cutoff at the property lines. We, we spent a lot of time on this, on this photometric to try to be, you know, I'd say good neighbors and be responsible.
You have sufficient, I trust you have sufficient lighting near the entrances and exits, so that.
Yes, sir. So we actually put three poles down here. And again, this, this distance here from the, from this, from, if you've been by too, from the street back, I mean, it is a narrow gap. We're going to have three poles that are going to light up that for safety purposes.
What about the buildings themselves?
And then the buildings themselves are going to have the lights in the front of the buildings and then only at the exit doors and stuff like that. So that if, and then we're, we're planning on at the exit doors doing motion sensors too, so that, you know, it doesn't have to be on all night. If there's activity there, then, you know, whether it's our employees or maybe somebody trying to break into the building or something, we just, then it'll come on. And so again, I think we tried to, tried to limit and tried to do the best we could to, to really just minimize everything we could. The thought in here is that if we have trucks and stuff like that, they're going to have their headlights on and things like that, and that'll be sufficient for us. And, and, you know, again, uh, if for any reason we find it's not operational, we'll come back and, and talk about what we're, what we're experiencing.
Well, you can light your property. I think the concern is really just as long as it's the downward facing and not spillage onto the other.
No, agreed. But, you know, again, having, you know, you get to drive by some, some buildings, some industrial parks and other things, and, you know, the places aren't lit up all night and stuff. So we just tried to see if we could try to minimize it the best we could and just to see if we could. But there's a lot of time and effort put into this. And you see the location of the, uh, of the wall packs is parking in this area here and then those locations. But, you know, we stripped them off the back of the buildings and stuff like that, just to try to, you know, so that we don't, you know, if you look at this plan here, it doesn't, you know, having lights in the back of this building, we, you know, they're going to, they're going to cut off the property line, but they're still going to be on. So again, if I can just take this and rotate it here, you may see these. But again, looking at that and when we did those distances, that's over 700 feet. So.
So at least the closest building to the residential area will have no lighting on the backside.
Correct. They'll be on the front. Again, those are the three sides that we were concerned about.
Do you have the entrances in the back?
Excuse me?
Is there an entrance to your building in the back?
To, to the building? No, we put them on the side doors so that we wouldn't have the, so that was the part, again, part of if, you know, if we had a plow, snow or things like that, we tried to put them on the side so the exits would be on the side of the buildings, uh, was our, our game plan there. So, um, so, you know, we submitted these. Um, I know the peer review is, I think is underway, so we, we funded that. So thank you for getting that. And then, um, uh, we followed up again with the various boards, the, the health, fire department has submitted. And then CONCOM was waiting for the drainage, uh, peer review. And, uh, like, you know, otherwise landscape plan was submitted, building elevation was submitted. So I believe everything that I wrote down from our last meeting, I believe we've, you know, tried to provide. And, uh, I think, I think we're just really waiting on the, uh, peer review.
Yeah. There was, uh, one thing from Fire Chief O'Brien about the hydro vocation, I believe.
He requested on the right as he, as you entered the building.
Yeah.
And it's the property, sorry.
I, I spoke with him personally and, and we actually coordinated and we're going to, we're going to meet on site to actually drive a stake in the ground and say, this is where I want it. So.
Perfect.
And then he actually wanted to, I think he did provide the, the layout that he was requesting. And then we also have, um, all the pictures and all the documentation on the culvert that he wanted for confirmation that it would, uh, be suffice for the, uh, largest and heaviest truck. He supplied that information to us. And so we did Class V RCP piping.
Yeah.
So, and that's installed. And we have all the pictures and documentation for that as well. And we have the submittal on it as well.
As far as elevations, is everyone happy with the design? Are you planning rooftop units?
Uh, no, we were actually going to be using like a Modine heaters inside. So it's a, the only thing would be a vent pipe potentially, uh, but.
You're not cooling them, you're just heating them?
Yeah. Minimal heat, so not too much. We, we, the only thing, I mean, we would potentially consider solar, but if it is, it would be below. So it'd be, you know, below the roof lines. So, but that's the only thing that we've thought, talked about otherwise for the roofs. Otherwise, everything else is going to be inside.
That seems like an excellent idea, honestly, if you have a large roof area.
Yeah, we have solar in our building right now and actually in Rainham. And it does the, we provide, uh, electricity for the three buildings for that one roof. So we don't get an electric bill, which I love, so.
That's really great.
But, uh.
No electric bill.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So.
All right. So that's everything you have to show us tonight?
That's, that's all. Again, I, you know, everything else that we were trying to clean up, I think we were, the peer review is the biggest thing we were trying to, like waiting on.
Dude, um, did anyone have any questions, comments? If you'd like to come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Wayne Caidos of 43 Cross Street.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. Uh, I just had one question that I forgot to ask the last time, if there was going to be any excavating done after the buildings are up. I know there's a lot going on there now.
All right.
After everything's up and running, going to be excavating.
You mean like big machines moving?
Yeah.
Because I think it, it sounds like there will be.
We'll have machines moving, but they're, we're not excavating. We just, we just store our material, equipment.
That's, that's what I was wondering. I forgot to ask that the last time.
Now, and that's, that's okay? Like, you, you're not thinking of like any noise canceling beepers or anything like that with the?
Noise canceling beepers and stuff?
There was like that swoosh sound that is an option for the back, backup beep instead of?
I haven't, uh, I mean, we're, we comply with all of our OSHA requirements and all that else. We're actually our, our, you know, our, all of our systems, we check them every day to make sure that, you know, the horns are all working and stuff like that. But yeah, we're not planning on any, you know, I mean, once we get up and running here, and again, this is really for our storage, our material and equipment stuff. And then, and we're, we're doing job sites, uh, New Hampshire, um, you know, Rhode Island, uh, Landford, Mass. We were doing a large job site out there. So we're all over, we're, we're expanding, you know, and getting larger. We're actually going to be doing two jobs in Florida. Uh, so we're, we're, we're setting up, but this would be our home base for, for where we're setting our equipment and stuff up.
And I think part of the peer review was noise, right Kathy? The recent, the peer review?
I don't think that's a standard.
No? Are you, are you hearing it now and that was your concern or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we hear that the truck's backing up and a lot of the, I don't know if they're grinding stones or whatever. I know, they're getting the weight ready.
That noise more so?
Yeah.
Next.
We're screening all those.
The screen, yes.
Yeah, that's, we're not playing on any of that operation. No, that, no, no, that's, so, once we get off this, this, this site, this is one of the reasons why this site was, I guess, difficult. This, this required like 30,000 yards of material.
It was low.
Yeah, it was low. And, and, uh, so, so we're actually, the, the site is almost at grade right now. So we've been working diligently while we're, you know, going through the permitting process and stuff like that. So we're ready to get going and are looking forward to get going with the, uh, with the buildings. So we're hoping to, uh, you know, to move ahead with, you know, these right here to start off. And then we will be working our way towards that. So I don't know that we'll finish all the buildings, you know, this year. It'll be into next spring is what our plan likely is.
And you had mentioned too, Mr. Kelly, that, from my recollection, that, you know, once this is fully operational, there are going to be set times that you're going to be leaving early in the morning and coming home, you know, probably about four or five o'clock. So during the day, it's going to be, I understand, fairly quiet.
Feeling quiet.
Yeah, during, during the day, there's very, very little activity on our sites and stuff. I mean, our guys are typically going, you know, getting out on the road, trying to beat some of the traffic, um, if you can, you know, it's getting earlier and earlier. But, and then they're usually getting back. And, and then we clean the trucks and, you know, things like that. So, and then we talked about the oil-water separator. So that's incorporate, you know, we've incorporated that stuff. But we try to, you know, try to maintain our equipment and stuff like that. And then, you know, again, we have to do certain things with mass DOT. We have to check that, we do have to check the alarms and things like that, make sure things are working. So if somebody backs out, uh, but again, we're not looking to, this is not a, you know, this is more of a shop and, you know, facility to send things in diverse, you know, this isn't really an, you know, an operational, um, you know, you know, it's not a, you know, not a pit, I guess, is what they, sometimes we would say. Um, so that's, that's our plan. So all this would be paved and, and then all the doors and stuff like that would be, you know, closed during the day typically. Um, again, you know, as little heat as possible, but.
Did you have any other questions?
No, that was it. I just wanted to verify that.
Okay.
Um, I do appreciate the lighting issue. That's, that's going to be huge, so.
Good.
Yeah, and I went up and looked at that puppy, we looked at your house.
We, we did.
Oh, you came up, checked it out?
Yep. When residents bring up these concerns or tries to get out.
I appreciate that.
I mean, I think, I think, you know, I think I can just view that, I think the area there is well protected for you. There's enough vegetation going trees and everything going on there.
It's pretty full right now because of the summertime.
Right.
Gets a little.
Sometimes it changes in the winter.
Opened up in the winter.
Right.
Yeah. But a lot of, again, a lot of the, there's a lot of low growth pine too, in that, and then we have the large conservation restriction area.
Right.
That's a nice buffer as well. You know, again, we, we've done the overlay of what Market Basket originally had proposed here. And so, you know, when you actually go through all these files, try to pull it all together with the water conditions and the various plans and stuff. I mean, it was a math, I mean, that was a massive, there was a, you know, huge store and, and, you know, huge parking areas. And, you know, definitely would have had a, I mean, I don't even know if this was built back then, but it would have had a big impact on everything there. So, uh, again, we, you know, where we are, we, we're just looking at the overlays and saying, you know, we're, we're pretty far apart from what was proposed and what was approved to now where we are. Um, so, and then, you know, even the L-shaped building that Bob Pulucchi had, I mean, he was even further down to here and stuff. So.
Yeah.
And I think all the loading docks would have been this side. So all that light would have been spilling, you know, kind of even to the property line, but you would have been looking right into the lights and stuff too. So a lot of that, and you would have had, you know, you could have, you know, a dozen different tenants, maybe landscapers and other things there too. So again, we're, we're a single user that's, you know, planning on being here. And we just need more space right now. So, yeah.
So no more questions, comments, concerns?
Nope.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Kelly, thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
And it says possible vote. Kathy, are we supposed to be voting on anything tonight?
Uh, just to continue the hearing.
All right, so.
Make a motion to continue five Harding Street, um, pending, I guess, what, peer review?
Review.
You have to do a date.
Do a date. So what's the next, what's the next meeting?
Let's not do the 22nd. Let's do the first one in September, so it's September 12th. Let's not do the 22nd, let's do the first one in September, so that's September 12th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue Five Harding Street to September fif, September 12th.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in second, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you then. So, item number three, Lloyd Gess, Gessenar, Gessenjar?
Geisner.
Geisner, thank you. Thorndike Development discussed senior housing proposal for land adjacent to the Lakeville Country Club.
So we have a power plant.
Okay, sure.
We're gonna move this way. You're gonna do it right here?
Yes.
It's over there, yeah? Is it on the screen or what?
It's going right here.
I want it on the screen.
Is it okay if we get some of the lights?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
It's the top, uh, all the price. I love your technology here.
Yeah.
Very nice, it's always, uh, it's always a adventure when you arrive at a new facility. I keep getting more and more to these. Thank you for taking the time, my name is Lloyd Geisinger, I'm president of Thorndike Development, I'm here with Michael Devon, um, who's, uh, gonna be working with me, also Thorndike, if we move forward with this, not here this evening, my partner David Heasridge, who is on vacation. Um, but again, a key player in, uh, how we approach these types of communities. Um, we have, at this moment in time, put under agreement, a, uh, portion of the Lakeville Country Club property. And, uh, I think, you know, everyone here knows, uh, the location of Lakeville Country Club, um, and, uh, the parcel of land that we have under agreement is, is shown off of Clear Pond Road. This is the primary entrance from Clear Pond Road into the, uh, golf course facility, um, and if you're familiar with this at all, there are actually a series of solar panels that sit on this property to the left right now. Those would be relocated if this project were to go forward. The proposal before you calls for two three-story, uh, elevated condominium buildings, which will be restricted to over 55. There is no zoning in Halifax, excuse me, in Halifax, I'm gonna talk about Halifax as Lakeville, that, um, that would seem to fit, uh, that would permit this property. So we're before you this evening, really, um, as a first step, to see whether or not this board, uh, feels as though the town of Lakeville might have an appetite for considering senior housing in this location. We are not, have no interest in moving forward with any kind of a proposal if we don't have support. This is, I wanna be very clear, there's no 40B involved here, there's no adversarial situation. It's something that, uh, we think has merit and we'd like to make our case, uh, to the town, um, and see whether there's an appetite, uh, to look into this further. The, uh, just jumping, oh, if he's working properly, just zooming in a little bit. As you can see, uh, two buildings, we as a company have a long history of working with smart growth and traditional neighborhood design. The design of these buildings, uh, at this preliminary level is intended to allow us to create a attractive streetscape along the edge, the parking is to the rear. We would also be, uh, upgrading the parking lot for the clubhouse in connection with, uh, these buildings if they went forward. I'd like to, if I could, um, just take a step sideways for a moment and, uh, share with you a couple of slides from a community that we are about to break ground on in Halifax. So, the, uh, we had purchased property at the intersection of Mont Ponce Street, um, and Route 106. The intersection of, um, 106 is just off the map here, this north is actually to the left in this plan. And we had acquired these two parcels of land, um, and shortly after acquiring them, uh, we were approached by the selectmen, um, and asked if we would have an interest in doing over, an over 55 community. As a company, we have done a great many, uh, senior condominium communities, we've also built apartments. Um, we had originally intended to develop this as an apartment community, um, largely because there was no zoning available in Halifax to do senior housing. We thought it was an excellent location for both. Uh, the selectmen felt very strongly that a over 55 community would be better received, um, than a 40B, we understand that. We were happy to work with the board, and in December, uh, we brought this proposal before, uh, town meeting, and it was overwhelmingly approved. So there's a master development agreement in place that spells out the commitments that Thorndike has made to the town and the town has made to us. This involved, um, our deeding a parcel of land here as a new, for a new senior center for the town of Halifax, which had been looking for a home. We're also contributing a substantial amount of, of funds, uh, as is the town, to building this senior center, between the funds that we've committed and funds that they've already approved, it's fully funded at this point. We're also the, agreed to build these pickleball courts, um, and there are 102 condominiums in three buildings shown here. The proposal that we are suggesting in Lakeville at the Country Club is 72 units, two buildings. And so these were, when we went to town meeting, um, we had, this was part of the presentation that we made, this is the, uh, proposed senior center, which we designed for the town. It's very similar to a, uh, community clubhouse that we built, um, in Plymouth behind Colony Place, um, and the pickleball courts, as I mentioned, which, uh, the town was, was anxious to see built. And this then was, uh, the architecture at a very conceptual level, um, when we went before town meeting. Since then, we have developed the detailed architecture for, uh, the Halifax, uh, community. This is a, uh, three-dimensional rendering of the building that we will break ground on in about six weeks. It is accurate to a quarter of an inch, it is precisely what we intend to build, and it is what we would propose, um, for the Lakeville Country Club property. So what you're looking at is a three-story building with an elevator, a, uh, central entry, um, and the, uh, all of these would be senior for-sale condominiums. And much as I described, you can see that we try and establish a very strong streetscape. This is very, this is actually a shot of the Halifax community, but surprisingly, um, and I certainly didn't plan this, remarkably similar to what we would expect it to look like as you come in on the Country Club entry road. There is green space across from the, from, uh, where the building would sit, which we would improve, there's an entrance into the, uh, clubhouse parking space over here. Uh, just a couple, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way, just a couple more shots. A little trouble here. Of the, uh, of the building, this then is the other side of the building where, where the parking, uh, lot would exist, and, uh, just a few more shots here. Um, and again, I wanna remind you that this is actually the Halifax, um, over 55 community, but our proposal would be two buildings, as I mentioned. Um, and you can actually see some freestanding garages in the back here, which, um, are also part of our proposal. Oops.
Fix that for me?
Thank you. So, um, I would like to, if I could, um, just take a, another couple of minutes and familiarize you a little bit with Thorndike. We have been building communities in southeastern Massachusetts for 42 years, I started the company 42 years ago, a little scary, but true. This happens to be a community that we built in Norwood, it was an apartment community, um, this is, uh, another apartment community that we built in Ashland. The outdoor spaces, we believe very strongly in creating a sense of place, putting a lot of emphasis into landscaping and, and, uh, I think, attractive buildings. Uh, this is a building, part of a community that we just completed in Canton, Paul Revere Heritage, uh, Park, 212 condominiums and a series of buildings, a fascinating, uh, story. If you haven't been up there, I'd encourage you to do so. And this, I keep doing that, I'm sorry, Michael. This is, um, Sawyer's Reach at the back of Colony Place, an easy drive, if you'd like to take a drive over and, and see firsthand, uh, one of our communities, this was done about 18 months ago. This was actually a blend of three-story, um, condominium buildings, as well as, uh, freestanding townhomes, duplex townhomes, single-family townhomes, all over 55, all age restricted. In this case, uh, flat roofs, and you can see roof decks on the top of these, uh, which were very popular and turned out to be extremely expensive. We're not doing those anymore. But, uh, really a very nice touch, and, uh, just a couple of shots, this is one of the, uh, in, interiors of one of our clubhouses. Chapman's Reach at Marina Bay, uh, which was a, a townhome community that we built back in 2000, um, considered one of the finest examples of smart growth in the country, won every award known to man. Um, and it was really an introduction for me into the whole idea of traditional neighborhood design, not worshiping the cars, getting the cars around back, trying to return these communities to the residents. Um, this is Red Mill Village in Norton, also an easy drive for you, if you wanted to take a look at something that we built, this was finished about seven or eight years ago. The Village Green, this happened to be a concert that we sponsored, uh, for the residents and the town. Red Mill Village was named best active adult community in the nation by the National Association of Home Builders. Uh, just a couple of more shots of Red Mill Village, we do a lot of victory gardens at most of our communities, they're incredibly popular with seniors, like getting to their green thumb back. Uh, we were also the second builder, um, at the Pine Hills in Plymouth, we built there for 10 years, this was a national award-winning, single-family home that we built, and we no longer are involved there, but were for many, many years. And, uh, that completes, um, the slides that I have for you. Again, our goal here this evening, um, is simply to introduce this to you, um, to get some feedback, whether or not you feel that the, that this board in particular, and the town in general, might have an appetite for entertaining, um, something like this. Um, honestly, uh, we, having just gone through this process in Halifax, um, it was very encouraging, we really, uh, you know, we, we all, I'm not gonna lecture you on the, all the issues surrounding housing issues here in Massachusetts. But, uh, providing quality homes for seniors checks a number of boxes and allows, obviously, every senior that moves into one of these homes is vacating a home that is then available for a young family that wants to start the process all over again. Can you keep it full screen? Michael? Don't shut it off.
Oh, okay.
It'll be right in my face.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why I shut it off. I just took the first slide out.
We'll certainly send that to you. Yes.
But maybe we could get that slideshow, um, to Kathy and then post it from the website?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we will certainly do that.
So, questions, comments, can we start from the planning board, anyone have any comments?
So, just very quickly.
Yes.
With regard to the overall community and its development, we're not thinking of, um, assisted memory care or any, it's just a?
No, this would be, this would be a straight.
Okay.
Um, over 55, uh, which of course, as you know, you're allowed to do, um, and, uh, for-sale condominiums. Yes.
Yeah, for sale.
Yes.
What would your, you said 72 units is your plan?
Yes.
What would be your minimum number of units that makes it worthwhile for you?
72. I'm not being cute.
No, okay.
The, the 70, the, the, uh, normally, for us to make sense of the community, to, to put the effort into these things, um, and how we approach it, it's usually 100. But, uh, this site is already prepped, it's, it's a, it's a very straightforward construction project for us, and frankly, we already have the architecture that we've just developed, and for another community that would translate very well. The, uh, having a golf course next door is a great amenity for seniors. The park across the street, which, if we get into this a little bit more, we would be very interested in participating and maybe freshening that up some and giving it some upgrades. The grandparents bringing their grandkids and having a place to take them is another tremendous amenity, so we think it's, it's a really good location for this type of a project.
See, it is, it is kind of a very decidedly single-family area of town. Whereas, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with, with your Halifax location, and that it's, you know, kind of more main road location.
Yeah. Well, you know, the, the, as you, as I should have mentioned, I'm sure you know, the, the golf course is own, is a business zone.
Right.
Parcel.
So it will.
Um, and I know there've been proposals over the years for various things. The nice thing about this particular piece of property is it is tucked quite nicely off the street. And, but you're right, that is a largely single-family area, trying to, uh, uh, address these housing needs, I think we're gonna see more and more, uh, looks at different types of ways of increasing density, cause it's the only way to get the price point down.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I understand that, you know, at the same time, I kind of believe in the, the right kind of project and the right location.
I agree, that's why I think the location works so well, this is next to the golf course, across from the, the park, relatively close to the highway, it checks all those boxes.
Yeah, I, I, I have to say initially, I'm not necessarily sold on it.
I understand.
The one thing I would say is the very first slide you had up, that was just a, 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 a quick pencil rendering, was a, a much nicer design than, than, uh, than the Halifax project.
It's the exact same building?
No, it wa, no, it wasn't.
So, the way that is generated, it is on a computer, the, the, the same, uh, building that you saw later in the presentation, through just applying a different graphic technique, is what makes that first line.
No, but the design, the, the, the design was different, I, I'm talking about the very, very first.
Yeah.
The introductory, the cover sheet, yes. That was something else. And it was, and it was much nicer.
It, it, okay. It, it just wasn't, it's, it's, there's only one, there's only one building, I only have one building, it's the same drawing, it's just done differently.
Any other questions from the board? So what, are you looking for a zoning change? Are you proposing a potential overlay, is there something specific that you're looking or hoping, um, would result in this project?
Well, I have one no vote.
Well, well.
I, I, I didn't say I was necessarily no.
You're a total, honestly, seriously, I'm, I'm very, you know, from my perspective, I've been doing this 40 years, you know, we, um, I think we do a good work. We very much appreciate working with communities that want us to work with them. Um, we've been working in Plymouth for over 20 years, we have an excellent relationship in town, we've done half a dozen projects there, we worked in Norton for 15 years, we did four different projects there. We're in it for the long haul, I'm blessed with three other partners, and, um, you know, and Thorndike will continue. This was presented to us as an opportunity, it made sense to me, but if it doesn't make sense to you, honestly, we'll take our marbles and we'll go play somewhere else. And what we're trying to find out now, start a process, is, is this something that, with a lot of work and a lot of massaging and, and addressing concerns, um, might be something that this board feels makes sense for Lakeville? I have to start somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
I was encouraged to start here.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm looking for feedback, if you folks don't think this is, if this is a round peg in a square hole and you don't see us getting to go, um.
Well, I can tell you, for myself, I don't have that answer for you right tonight. I would love to hear input from the residents, I have some more questions myself, I, I wasn't sure if you're looking for a zoning change, an overlay?
I, I believe that there are a number of ways in which it could be done. I think that if we, when we, if we start moving down that path, the logic, the most, the logical way to do something like this is an overlay district. So it would require creating, either amending one of the existing zoning bylaws, um, and there are, I think, several candidates in there that one could think about adding additional, uh, sections. in there that one could think about adding additional sections too, so that senior housing was a permitted use through an overlay district.
Do you mind if I, how, how large is this area?
Well, this is part of the Lakeville Country Club property, which is a hundred and seventy acres.
Right, but you wouldn't be looking to overlay a whole?
No, no, no. This is only about two and a half acres that we're, that we would be purchasing.
So, I think we would just have to be careful with a spot zoning, so it...
Right. So, we, obviously, we would need to get attorneys involved, but having just gone through this process in Halifax with a comparable situation, in Halifax, which also did not have any senior housing zoning when we started the process, on advice of council, both our council and town council, there was a new overlay zoning district created.
And we have, this board has talked about, potentially, to...
And there was a new zoning bylaw introduced, and so the way it was set up was, if town meeting voted to add a particular parcel as an identified overlay zone, then the zoning bylaw that was also passed would apply. So, no one could come, no one in Halifax can just walk into the planning department and say, "We want to build senior housing in a different location in town," without taking it to town meeting and having town meeting agree that that location makes sense in creating an overlay zone.
So, are you aware of all the different age-qualified, as well as memory care, assisted living, that's proposed in Lakeville so far? And I also was told that there's thirty-three units of age-qualified at Island Terrace that's actually going to auction, like currently. Like, it's already been permitted. They have a special permit. So, I didn't know if you've done any sort of, you know, market analysis for the needs in Lakeville for this, because we do have, so, at the old hospital site, there's sixty-eight units of fifty-five-plus proposed, as well as a hundred, oh my gosh, a hundred and twenty memory care, and seventy of the...
Seventy-two, I think, yeah.
Seventy, two units of assisted living. So, have you taken those other...
I am familiar with those projects. The geographic area that we would expect to draw from for a community like this would be Lakeville and the towns that touch Lakeville. From our experience, we'll get about seventy percent of our customers from that geographic area. And then you'll find people that come from surprising places, and invariably, what you discover is that their kids are living somewhere around here, or they have some sort of a connection. Lakeville is, well, located relative to the highway network. We would be happy, and we have quite a bit of demographic data that we could come back and share with you, but I think we all understand that, you know, every community's population is aging. When you, I was looking at your master plan from a few years ago, and it mirrors everything we've seen. The average age, you know, between twenty, I forget which date it had picked, and twenty-twenty had increased significantly. That's not unique in Lakeville. The baby boomers are here, they're of age. And one of the interesting things that we have found, because we've been doing these types of communities for more than twenty years, is that we're seeing quite a few people that ten or fifteen years ago kind of called it the leading edge of the baby boomers, who were very interested in buying a townhome, and were okay walking up a couple of stairs to get into their first floor, and they were okay with a bonus room, a man cave, or whatever the case may be, up on the second floor, as long as the master bedroom was on the ground floor. Now, fast forward, those people, rather than being in their early sixties or in their mid-seventies, but they've put down roots, and they've established a new home in a given location, but that townhouse is problematic for them. And when we built at Sawyer's Reach at the back of Colony Place, which is with two hundred and twelve or twenty, two hundred and twenty-four condominiums there, it was a blend of townhomes and the three-story buildings. And so, we were able to see a wide spectrum of this over-fifty-five market. And the people who were buying the homes in the elevator buildings were probably ten years older than the people that were in the townhomes. But you mentioned assisted living, and one of the things that we have found as well, if we're lucky, many of us are living a lot longer. You know, there are seniors who are living regularly, deep into their eighties and their nineties. And we're healthier longer if we take care of ourselves. But it can be very, very expensive to get into an assisted living situation and wind up being there for twenty years or fifteen years. And a lot of seniors worry that they're going to bleed their assets. And so, these types of communities that we're describing, where you have access via an elevator, where you don't have stairs, where you have a sense of community, but you're still able to fend for yourself, and you don't need the amenities quite yet that an assisted living facility offers, or an independent care facility offers, which you have to, of course, pay for, are playing an increasing role in the, that senior community spectrum. There's a tremendous amount of literature on this nationwide, as various efforts are being made to plug that gap. So, we feel that this type of a community would serve that purpose.
Now, and you brought up the price aspect of it. Do you have a price point in mind? Are these high-end? Are these more in line with what you see for senior homes, or what, do you have something comparable that you showed us that you can reference, what they're selling for?
Well, we're about to, we're about to release these buildings in Halifax in about a month, and we're in the process of actually putting that pricing together right now. It's gotten very expensive to build anything, as you know. I'm embarrassed at what we have to sell homes for to make sense, and I wish it could be less. But these, I would expect, would start somewhere in the low fours and go to the low fives. That's kind of where we're pricing things right now, and we're able to, and if it was a single-family home or a townhome, we're building townhomes at a community in Rainham called Parkwood, ten minutes from here. We have a model home there. You know, I'd encourage you to go buy. We're in the sixes there, and I'm not happy about that.
And I was just informed today, median homes prices in Lakeville are seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So, and of course, the people that would be buying these condominiums are hopefully selling that home, you know, for seven hundred thousand dollars, and able to put some money towards something else, and still have a, you know, an attractive, downsized condominium.
Now, does anyone else have any questions before I open it up? You are?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Whereabouts in Norwood is that project?
One upland. It's off of Route 1A. It's at the back. It's adjacent to the Moderna complex. So, it used to be the Polaroid campus.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just very quickly, on average, how many bedrooms are we looking at for these facilities? Is it going to be mixed, like different types of units?
Well, the vast majority of them would be two-bedroom units.
Okay.
There would be some one-bedroom, and a few three-bedroom, but it's, you have to be a little careful when you're talking about seniors and the role that bedrooms play in a senior community, right? Because first of all, the condominium documents will specify that no one under the age of eighteen can live full-time. They can visit, but they can't live full-time. So, there's no, there's no school-age children issue here. So, it's a question of whether you want an extra bedroom for when your adult children come and visit, you know, or whether your grandkids are staying over, and whether you want one extra bedroom or two extra bedrooms, or you can't afford either.
He needs to sleep separately because he snores. I hear people do it.
They absolutely do, but there's also the potential of a caregiver.
Right.
You know, so someone who is looking ahead a little bit, remember, we're selling to people that are a little bit older in this type of community. They're in their, maybe they're in their seventies rather than in their sixties, and they're looking ahead and saying, you know, "We might need some help." I do want to make it clear that I'm not a no, but you'll have to convince me.
Yeah.
I look forward to it.
Come on up, Noel. Yeah, sit right here. Noel, real open. Thank you for your presentation. One of the questions I have is, and you had shown a senior center that I think in Halifax you put in, would that be a component of this?
So, we recognize that in order to put forward a proposal that will win two-thirds vote at town meeting, it's going to need to have some goodies attached to it. And exactly what those goodies are, we need to hear from you. In the case of Halifax, when we arrived in town, it just so happens that they had passed a bond issue the previous year, or two years earlier, to build, to renovate an existing structure for a new senior center. They authorized $2.6 million, and they went out to bid, and the building came in, and it closed to $4 million. And so, it died on the vine. It was also a very challenging building. They were renovating a historic building. It wasn't a great location. There were all sorts of extra costs associated with that. We had the ability, fortunately, to be able to carve out a lot. And in a meeting very much like this, in one of our very first meetings, in that case, it happened to be with the Board of Selectmen, we, I had this exact, I made the same comment, you know, "What can we do to build support, and what do you think would be helpful?" And they immediately latched on to a new senior center, which was a perfect fit for us, because we're building a senior community, so they would benefit from it. So, the answer is, at the moment, no, but all things are possible.
So, it is in the realm of possibility?
Well, we wouldn't be able to fund an entire senior center. In the case of Halifax, they're contributing half the cost.
Maybe partially.
Well, we have an addition, actually, that the town has been looking at, to the senior center.
Well, that would be a great fit.
Yeah, okay. I was just, wanted to ask about that, because we do have an aging population.
I understand.
I can testify to that myself. Thank you for your presentation. Anyone else? Yep, come on up. Say your name, please.
Yeah.
You mean in Street?
Okay.
We don't have a senior center, other than we have a public area plaza, and that's one of the concerns, is there's no place for people to gather. And I think, as you look at us old folks, you know, they like...
Us old folks, right?
Yeah. I don't think you're as far down the road as I am.
Oh, you've been so...
You know, they want, you know, they want to get out of those condos.
Yeah.
And get together. So, in the one in Pine Hills, you've been, you know Pine Hills, so you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And that's way over beyond what we...
Well, there are three thousand homes at the Pine Hills.
I know.
Yeah.
So, still, prices are...
If you'd like to let us build three thousand homes, here we go.
Hi, my name's Tom Verkione. I live at sixteen Reservoir Avenue, right down the street from the proposed location. I also own a home across the street at thirteen Reservoir. So, I didn't even know this was on the agenda tonight, so lucky happenstance, I guess. But I'm curious how you manage parking, traffic, and transportation issues at your other properties?
Well, the parking is a blend of detached garages and a parking field that sits behind those two buildings, as we showed on the plan.
Right.
And so, I'm not sure, I guess I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I'm familiar with the area of land you're talking about. It's pretty tight in there, so picturing a parking lot sufficient in size with garages behind the building that you illustrated, kind of stretches my understanding of what you can do on that piece of property.
So...
The other thing is, it's a side street. You know, Clear Pond Road is a connecting road between, you know, Route seventy-nine and Main Street, Route one oh five. So, there's already some traffic there, and this would certainly increase the amount of traffic
Definitely.
on there.
Definitely.
And, you know, it sounds like most of these people who buy into the property would be self-sufficient, at least for the initial few years that they lived there, but at some point, they're going to need assisted kinds of transportation. And I'm wondering how your other communities accommodate those needs.
So, that question I understand. The, obviously, if this goes forward at all, let me start by saying, as I said a little earlier, there's a hundred and seventy acres of land here. So, if, in the discussions as we get into it, there's a consensus feeling that there's not enough buffer, and that the buildings need to move away, or be relocated, or adjusted, or the parking field needs to be getting better screened. That can all be on the table. We identified a parcel of land that seemed to make sense to us, that seemed as though we could buffer it properly and screen it, and so on and so forth. So, at this early stage of talking about whether or not the town wants to support senior housing in this general location, I'm not trying at all to minimize the issues you're raising. I'm just saying that I think we're a couple of steps away from getting into actual site planning type discussion.
Right.
With respect to your, the issue you've raised about assisting people, not only with parking, but with transportation, but in a variety of ways, our experience with these types of communities is that they're transitory. And what I mean by that is, they make sense as a location for someone to live, when they don't want to deal with stairs, and they don't want to have to pay for an independent living or assisted living facility. So, they're making a conscious decision that, "I'm still independent, I'm still healthy, you know, I cook for myself, and I, and I want to be independent."
Sure.
When that, when that situation changes, they can't look to this location for increased services. They need to think about selling that condominium and moving into a facility that can provide those services. I know my mother was in that situation. She lived in a community just like this, and then she got to a point where it didn't make any sense for her anymore. Now, it was challenging getting her out of that condominium. She had to fall twice before she was willing to make the move, which, of course, is always a problem. But that's the reality. This will not be set up to provide those types of services. The whole thought here is, just as these seniors who will be moving, in most cases, out of a family homestead where they raised their family, and now making that home available to another young family that can re-energize the town in that regard, these folks will stay where they are as long as it makes sense for them to stay where they are, and then they'll move.
I mean, don't misunderstand me. I mean, of all the proposals for that golf course property, this is the most acceptable one that I've heard over the years. So, you know, initially, I think it's a decent idea.
Well, you said you own two properties already. Maybe we can get you to buy another one.
Well, speaking of independence, I'm not ready for that kind of thing yet, so...
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Anyhow, just a couple of questions.
All right. So, you're more, you're leaning in favor? How would you feel about a zoning change proposal at a town meeting, though? Would you vote in favor? Because that's what, this would take a two-thirds majority vote at town meeting in order to create a zoning overlay for this area.
Well, you know, it'd be nice to know what the other plans are for that golf course property, because, you know, the current owner, to my understanding, is quite an ambitious property owner. And so, this particular proposal seems very advantageous, frankly. But how the rest of the property would be developed would impact how I would vote on
And now, so, it brings to mind the question of, so, you mentioned the golf course.
Yeah.
People wanting to live on a golf course. You're aware that it's own business.
Yeah.
Are you planning on marketing these units to these buyers as you're living on a golf course? And knowing that we've already, just recently, over, about a year ago, approved a definitive subdivision for that golf course, I guess, do you... subdivision for that golf course, I guess, do you anticipate what happens if it becomes some sort of a business over there? Like, have you thought of that or you're marketing it to people who want to live on a golf course?
I have a memorandum of understanding with the property owner. We haven't really gotten that far. You know, I don't have a binding purchase and sale right now. We took it far enough so that I have an understanding with him. We have a price agreed to for this two and a half acres, for this number of units. We've talked, of course, about the rest of the golf course. The, look, I don't think you can go two days at this moment in time without hearing housing mentioned somewhere, you know, in the news. Housing, housing, housing.
Absolutely.
It's real, it's a problem, and there's no quick fix. But I am a big believer that, I don't believe in the 40B affordable housing approach for a whole bunch of reasons. I think it winds up, I will tell you, because we're doing this right now. So, we wound up buying a 40B that someone else had permitted in Rainham, that we've named Larkwood, that we are just getting underway. We've been marketing since December, we're doing quite well, but it's really just getting going. When we put off, but we have current pricing, current cost information for a town home that a family could move into, a young family. That market rate home costs $100,000 more than I would have to charge if I wasn't also having to assign 25% of those units as affordable. Now, I'm not suggesting that we don't need to address the affordable housing issue. What I'm suggesting is that I don't know that it's fair to put that burden on the people who are buying the homes next door exclusively. So, the reason I'm bringing this up is that I think there's a more nuanced way to start to address how do we deal with all these various price points with people. And my point is that seniors are staying put in a home that someone could put sweat equity into and revitalize and bring a new family into the community if they had a place to go, that they were excited about. So, when we start to solve the seniors' problem, we are also starting to solve the affordable problem in a way that I think allows people to not only get into a home in a neighborhood where they're going to be like-minded people, but also allows them to start to build equity. And that's part of the problem with the 40B program, because someone who gets an affordable home doesn't build any equity. They're just marking time. I didn't mean to get on my high...
No, no. But so you do, so my original question, though, you have an agreement?
I think that, and the reason I went through all that is, I don't think that the demand for senior housing is very deep and getting deeper. We sold out 220 units at the back of Colony Place in Plymouth at a pace of over 100 units a year. We could have sold, if we could have built them twice as fast, we would have sold twice as many. At our typical community, over the past seven or eight years, even through COVID, we have delivered a home a week in every individual community that we've built. That's how deep the market is, that's how much demand is of being met. So, could there be more housing if the senior community on part of the golf course, if the town wanted to get behind in the future? Absolutely, but we're not asking you for that. We're just focused on this one piece of land. I think we got to, we have to get to know each other.
Did you consider any other locations in Lakeville?
You have one in mind? I'm serious. But, I mean, we tend to be reactive, not proactive, when it comes to sites. You know, people come to us, we have enough of a reputation at this point.
I'm guessing you were approached.
Yes, we were approached. Yes, we were approached. I get approached every week with something, you know, and we turn 99 out of 100 of them down.
That's really all I had to ask at this point.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for your input.
Susan Spielor. So, did you mention that there'd be elevators in this?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I thought you did, but I just wanted to confirm that because we have another senior qualified housing, three stories, no elevators.
I think the worm has turned on that one. Or the knees, you know, one thing or the other.
Right. Let's see what else I was going to ask. Did I see that there's an exit also on Harcourt Ave besides Clear Pond, so there's two exits?
The second exit is intended to be an emergency access.
Okay. Emergency only?
If it was up to us, it would be gated. But yes, we're showing a roadway out there for fire...
Okay, I wasn't sure if I saw...
Police, fire.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Not gated, I'm sorry, I didn't mean gated for the residents, I meant police and fire emergency.
Right, so there'd be only one exit, okay.
Wouldn't that access?
Right.
No access except in an emergency situation.
Right. I mean, would you ever entertain buying that golf course and keeping it as a golf course or...
You mean as an 18-hole golf course, the way it is?
Or just nine and develop the other?
I see I'm not going to be able to avoid these types.
No.
Sure.
Sure, okay.
I mean, I'm sure, like, if you're already getting it now, I mean, it's going to come up at the town meeting as well. So, I think the more information you can flush out now and have up front for the people is going to really just help your case.
We do not have any agreement to purchase the remainder of the golf course, nor do we intend to sign an agreement at this point in time to purchase the remainder of the golf course.
But it could be a possibility at some point.
Absolutely, absolutely. We would probably have some sort of a write-up refusal baked into our agreement so that the owner can't go and sell it to a competing developer and now all of a sudden, we got dueling condominium projects. But I meant what I said. I mean, we're trying to take a baby step here. You know, we're trying to do something that we think makes sense, which doesn't destroy the golf course. I would think that repurposing that golf course would be a much more controversial conversation.
I think, I think you're correct. Because, and also, when you, when you reference Colony Plaza in Plymouth, selling those units like hotcakes, I mean, you're comparing it to Lakeville, we don't even have a supermarket in town.
Right.
So, you need to provide that sort of amenity that those people would be lacking.
Yes.
Because you have to have something to draw them. And that's my question about, is that golf course your marketing strategy to live on the golf course because we, like we have with LeBaron?
Yeah, you know, as I said before, we live this every day and there's just a tremendous lack of supply and a tremendous strength of demand in this market. I actually don't think we would need to have the golf course, but it's a plus. And we would be very, very careful in how we described, you know, whether that golf course is going to stay or what's going to happen. I mean, we've dealt with that type of situation before.
Right, because then you'd also have people potentially buying condos and saying, this was a golf course when I moved here, what happened?
Which needs a lot of help.
Yeah.
I mean, the golf course isn't in the greatest shape either.
Well, if they have an agreement, potentially, I could, right.
Now, I'll just give you one aside.
Sure.
I'm a cottages section. You know, I was the first person in, the first house. Every other condo in this city, this 32, was sold before the ground, they even put a shovel to the ground. That shows you kind of the demand.
We pre-sell everything. We don't build spec at all. So, when I say we're conveying 50 homes in a year, what I mean is we're signing 50 purchase and sale agreements before we even start that person's home, so.
Ian, Barbara, any more questions, comments? No? So, like, I'd like to hear consensus. Is this something that, you know, this would go to town meeting, it would need a vote? We've got five of you here. I know that you're all fairly, at least, I know, I'm familiar with four of the five of you. The four of you are fairly outspoken in town. Is this something that you would like to see move forward or at least hear more information? Is this something you'd support?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
I'd like to see something.
Okay, come on up.
Barbara Standish-Bridge Street. I kind of live in the neighborhood, I'm a little bit set back from that. And I have to be honest with you, I really tried not to like you because I don't like change. I live on a fourth-generation farm. My last name is Standish when I tell you that my husband's family's been in the area forever.
I'm familiar with the name.
Thirteen generations.
That's remarkable.
I really like this idea. I think that this would work. I would be really interested in seeing the footprint as it lays on the land, because in my mind, two and a half acres is not a lot of land to put two buildings, in a parking lot, and perhaps maybe like a nice outside area for the seniors to gather. But I really do like this idea.
Well, thank you.
And I did end up liking you. When I saw you on the agenda, I'm like, I'm not going to like you.
Wait for the town meeting.
Oh, hey, you know. Trust me, been there, done that.
Yeah, well, you're a friendly audience here, what did you get there?
I...
So...
Well, just another question, I mean, given...
Just the Wakeham, can you hear yours, sorry? For the recording.
You know, given the size of the LeBaron Hills housing development, basically across the street from the golf course, do town officials feel like there's a gap in this town for additional senior housing?
So, I mean, we can reference the master plan, I know the housing production plan has looked at it as well, and he's correct that we do have an aging population that have been staying in their homes and what he said is right on. That if they are able to stay in town, sell their home, it does open up the market for those younger families to be able to come in and purchase. Say if you had, you know, a daughter or a son or someone who wants to live in town and they can't afford to, they can't find a home, it does help that market fluctuate and change. And we know that, so right now, we have a lot of building coming proposed, at least for Lakeville. I like that it is on that side of listening to what the needs are with the 55-plus, with the assisted living, the memory care, all of that. I think that's great to come into town because we have a need. It would be great if you could show up some more demographics. I don't know if you could throw something together...
Absolutely, we have that information.
To show. Even taking these proposed developments into consideration, as well as the 33 units that haven't even been built in Island Terrace, which that's, that's kind of different from this because that's high-end.
Sure.
So, I know they were going for a higher price point.
Yeah.
But even if you could throw some sort of...
Absolutely.
You know, documentation, maybe something that anybody could do the research and validate themselves, because we have a lot of very intelligent people in Lakeville that will do that. I think that would be helpful. And otherwise, it seems like it's a, an idea that deserves to be explored further. What is your timeframe, though? Because we have a Fall Town meeting and then we have a Spring Town meeting.
I think we would target the Spring Town meeting.
Okay, that's good because that gives us...
I don't think anywhere that we could get ourselves...
Yeah, I don't think we would...
We couldn't get organized for a Spring Town meeting. A few big projects. When is your Spring Town meeting typically?
So, it used to be the second, Monday in May, and now it's June, this past year it was June 10th. So, is that the first?
That's close.
Unless they change it again, but it's either May or June.
I don't even know if it's been posted yet.
I don't think so.
Well, these things come around sooner than you think.
Right, absolutely.
And it's always that earlier date that you have to reserve the warrant.
Yeah, and so, we would need something for that warrant by March.
Right.
So, that means we would have to put something together. I don't know if it's something that we should work on individually or have you join that conversation to make sure that the proposed overlay works for your proposal.
So, if we were to try it, if we wanted to reach out to several of the other boards in town, who would you suggest should be our next stock?
I mean, Board of Health, because there's no sewer over there. I believe there is a water line close by.
Yes, there's a water line out the front. Should we be presenting to the Board of Selectmen?
Select, yeah, yeah, can't hard to get the Select Board on board, although I know their meetings have been very lengthy, so I don't know if you want to see if you can get on a lighter agenda. Maybe, maybe go to the COA even, we have a...
I should have, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. When we, the Halifax effort that we just did, it was the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the Council on Aging that worked collectively with us in each step of the way. And we got really good input from the Council on Aging Director, especially since we were building that senior center.
I can't think of anyone else who might be interested.
Thank you so much for taking the time, we appreciate it. And we'll send you the presentation and put that package together.
That'd be great.
List of properties? Yes, like, he takes notes. That's why I never come along. Hard time talking right when it's...
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, number four, public hearing, 7 o'clock, a little bit after 7, it's 8:25. This public hearing will consider amending several sections of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land in Lakeville. These changes may have resulted from changes in state law, changes to zoning bylaw, or administrative changes, possible vote. Here's the public hearing notice. Lakeville Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81-Q, on Thursday, August 8, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at the Lakeville Police Station. 323 Bedford Street to consider amending the following sections of the Lakeville Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land in Lakeville, Mass, as follows. Section IC, Purpose. Section 2A, Definitions. C, Source of Information Required. D, More than One Building for Dwelling Purposes. E, Fees and Costs. Section 3, A1, Submission of Plans. A2, Contents. A3, Endorsement of Plan. 5, Determination That Plan. 6, Failure of Board to Act. B1, Submission of a Preliminary Plan. B2, Contents. B3, Approval. C1, Submission of a Definitive Plan. C2, Contents. E2, Review by Town Officials. G, Planning Board Procedure. H1, Final Approval with Covenant. H2, Final Approval with Bonds or Charity. J, Recording. H, Release of Performance Guarantee. Section 4, A1, General. B1, Location. D2, Procedure. H1, Street Signs and Names. I3, Street Lights. And 2, Procedure. And Section 5, D1-6, Inspection Notices. A copy of the amendments can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment. Does somebody want to make a motion to open this public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the Lakeville Planning Board to amend the rules and regulations.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, this is the relevant copy. And did we, did you hear from Town Council about the forms?
I didn't. I reached out to Nate, but I didn't hear back, so.
Okay, so we don't know if the forms have been reviewed by Town Council, but we do have the fees addressed, because we went over that thoroughly last meeting. We also have, just for anyone interested, it's minor revisions to the rules and regulations. And even though this has a date of 2018, it hasn't been updated since before that, it was older.
87, I think it was.
What was it, 97?
87.
87? 1987, it's been, so there's the timeframes that are wrong here. There are references to departments that we don't have, a lot of it was changing.
Name changes.
Yeah, like, the, gosh, I had to put Department of Public Works as opposed to the...
Hours.
Highly drafted, that's what it was in here. There were, there were references to state laws that I don't even think exist anymore.
Do we need to individually go back and go through the sets all of them and back the...
No, no, that's just listing out where all of the revisions were, so.
Great, went through all those.
Yeah, we did go through it all previously. I know Nate had looked it over as well, he said it looked good to him. So, I think we'll... So I think what we should do is adopt the new revised rules and regulations.
Pending.
Uh, pending, along with the forms, but pending Town Council's review and approval of those forms.
So I need several changes.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh.
Did I, yeah, was that one that I saw that you, did you make a?
So, yeah, it was in italics and highlighted is what I have worked on for the last couple of days.
Okay, so we do have to go over it then. What page does your revision start on?
Starts on that page eleven.
Okay.
Properly formatted PDF, is that? Is that where we're starting?
Uh, six copies.
Yeah, so this page we have to talk.
Okay, so you, so you were able to get that. You guys, so that's just part of the submission of the plans, okay. So, six.
Page twenty-five, six.
Okay, but you're, you're crossing out the five, right, and replacing it with six?
Yes.
Okay. Six. One mile large, the purpose of a properly executed Form A application. Necessary evidence to show that the plan does not require approval. A properly formatted PDF of the plans to show the electronic submit via email or another file sharing website, i.e. Dropbox, okay. So that's good because that's the process in place currently. Okay. Now, are you putting in these question marks?
Yeah, so down there it says may, but I just question that because that kind of says that they don't have to do it. Like it's a choice, they may do it. Such other skill as board may accept and may contain the following. So I don't know if that was because you didn't. Well, all, it would be okay if something wasn't included, but if you want all those things included, then that should say shall.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. May accept. And shall contain, right? Just changed that one.
Should contain.
No, it says shall. It's not shall, then they, then they don't have to do it.
Okay. And then lower right-hand corner of the plan, question mark. What is that?
So it's not always on the lower right-hand.
True.
Sometimes at the top.
Right, right. So we could just strike that?
Yeah.
Just of the board and take out in the lower right-hand corner of the plan. So just of the board, period.
Yeah.
And then is this yours on twelve, page twelve-oh?
Yeah.
The Lakeville Planning Board's endorsement makes no determination as to compliance with zoning. So did you add that in or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we had on a checklist that was required.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Yep, if that wasn't there, definitely. The next page, after the endorsement of the plan, the applicant is required to email a properly formatted PDF of this endorsed plan via email or other file sharing website, i.e. Dropbox to planning staff. Who is? This is in a, that's basically saying the same thing. So why is this being added? Under A and R. Applying approval. Is it?
About A and R?
Well, that's what, yeah, because it's under endorsement of it. So does it need to be in there again?
Yeah, it does.
It does?
That's what the process is right now.
Because what's different from what is stated on the page eleven? Because that's.
So this is once it's endorsed.
Submitting it, okay, so they have to, after it's endorsed, they have to?
After we endorse it, they have to.
They email it to you?
They scan it and email it to you?
Yes.
Call for flight records?
Yep.
Oh, I guess I didn't know that. I figured you just did it. Okay, so that's just the process currently. And then under preliminary plan, subdivision may be submitted, submission of a preliminary plan. A preliminary plan of subdivision may be submitted by the applicant.
So real quick, on, on page eleven, you're crossing out five though, right? I mean, the six? Yeah. It's not crossed out.
Yeah, so I missed that.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about that.
We just agreed on it.
Two, with nine full-size and six reduced-size prints of a plan. To be found, the Board of Properly Formatted PDF of the plans shall be electronically submitted via email or another file sharing Dropbox. One copy of the plan will then be distributed by the staff to the Conservation, Board of Health, Department of Public Works. There's an H in there. Is that, that's not supposed to be in there, right?
No.
Open space, building, fire department, police department, and Select Board.
Form D.
Five, the Lakeville Assessor's Office, listing all in, or support areas of, and five hundred feet of the subject property and one set of mailing labels. But what's the question mark for that one?
What's the question?
On page fourteen, the next one down.
So, there's nothing in the statute that says that that's required. It's in the rules and regs now, so just a question if you wanna continue to do that. There's nothing required for a preliminary plan. So that's just your, your decision, yeah.
Kind of.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was better, yes. I mean, the last thing we need is people saying, oh, we never heard about this.
Right.
So I think it's better to leave it in there than to take it out.
That's great. So the preliminary plan should be drawn on tracing paper? With a pencil on a suitable scale? I just, I was wondering.
I saw it someplace else at least, yeah.
We should do it on Lamin.
Yeah. Really? I'm gonna hold them to it.
Yeah, before there was my one, there was Lamin. I did lots of ink on Lamin.
Should we change that?
Should we take that out?
Yes.
I would think so.
Yeah.
On a drafting table.
Yes.
Do we even need, should we just take it out? We don't have to be, or should we be specific?
And shall be, well, what do we say on the other ones when they give those first? Suitable scale and.
Registry first, who is the plan?
Yeah.
Legibly drawn in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Registry of Deeds, Chapter thirty-six, Section thirteen A. So I don't know if that's specific to A and R though.
The preliminary plan shall be, I don't know, presented at a suitable scale on.
I think we could just take off, off the tracing paper. Preliminary plan shall be drawn at a suitable scale.
Yeah.
Right? At a suitable scale, preferably forty feet to an inch.
Well, yeah, the.
What?
Forty feet to an inch is a very traditional.
Necessary.
Where are you saying, seeing that, Jack?
Right there.
India? What?
India, equal on tracing card.
What page?
Oh, you must be on a different one.
Sorry, forgive me, forgive me.
What page?
It was sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, okay, all right. That was on.
Skip ahead.
So we. So we see the tracing pa, so just take off.
It should be drawn at a suitable scale there.
On tracing paper with pencil, just take that off on page fourteen. And then, let's just go fifteen first before we jump to sixteen. First, open space committee, private one, police department, Select Board. Nine full-size sets and six reduced-size, around nineteen seventeen, so that was added, that's good. And. C, Application for Approval of a Planned, improperly formatted PDF.
You keeping I U Dropbox though, on page sixteen?
Oh, yeah, it must have just kind of.
Crossed out too much.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't mean to cross out Dropbox?
Yeah.
Okay. Properly forma, so are you cross, you are crossing off the second line there, or you're not? Where it's cross off and a properly formatted PDF of the definitive plan? Because that doesn't seem like it should be, right? It just says highly, not.
Yeah, I think that's a mistake.
Like so, okay.
So you're gonna keep that line?
Yeah.
Yeah, everywhere else, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what counts as crossed off.
Okay. And, oh, yeah, so I think that whole line too, where it says Dropbox, including the time within.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so all that keep. And you're questioning this part where it says Form D Designer Certificate?
Yeah, what is that?
So I think that, that was one of the new, new forms included.
You don't have those here?
Are they not in that? Oh. Yeah, so I did match up all the forms to what it was calling for.
So is that something that's required?
What is it?
It. It was basically saying that everything's been designed to, you know, the, the standards.
I mean, does the board think that's something that's important where we've never done it? To add more paperwork to.
Does it just validate that this designer is who they are with their, you know?
I understand that, but saying we've, we've, we've never done that, so is that like important? Important? And then if this is a new form, then I would need to know like what I'm looking for. So you're adding additional things? I'm really not sure what I'm supposed to be looking for in this.
Well, I think that, so it's not we're adding any new, anything. This was existing. It's just never been used.
Yeah.
It, it was always in the rules and regulations. We're just not taking it out.
Yeah, we, we never asked.
So, so now we're just including the form that was already referenced. So it's the. I hereby certify that the above plan accompanying data are true and correct in accordance with the requirements of the current rules and regulations governing subdivision land of Lakeville, Massachusetts. Designs contained herein are in accordance and commonly accepted engineering practice in compliance with applicable laws and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and bylaws of the town. Sources of data are as follows. Oral information furnished by, and gives areas to include, actual measurement on the ground and other field determinations. All the information required under Section three, B two, contents for preliminary plan has been shown on the plans, either yes or no. So, I mean, we're looking to clean this up. To me, I, I think we should include it if it's been referenced and. Minivar uses it as well, and I think there's probably a reason. I, I'd like to get, obviously Town Council has to, has to review all this. This one, no. No, it's just signed by the registered professional and then the address.
Does it just give us peace of mind to know that these buildings are by a professional designer, right? The design work?
Yeah.
Right, they pass work.
Yeah, it has to be a registered professional, so it can just.
Rather than, yeah, the owner's wife.
Does preliminary plans with the.
I've seen that, go left, I've seen.
Yeah, unenacting, yeah.
The hotel in Pine Hills?
Yeah.
The wife did the design.
I mean, unless you think it's not necessary. And then there's the second one that's D one, Land Surveyor Certificate. So that's making sure that it's a, you know, the land surveyor is.
Certified.
Registered.
I mean, the, just to play devil's advocate here, I mean, if, let's say for instance, something did happen where somebody lost their certification or something did happen, I mean, it does become legal issues. So at that point, you know, to protect the town, I, I don't know. I mean. It's just, it's not a form that has to sign at all, it's just, you know, it's just like an affidavit. There's nothing ever saying about their, that they are who they are and they.
Okay, well, I mean, I just need to know like what am I looking for on this form? Because I've never done that before, so.
Yeah.
Did you, you reviewed the, the forms though, right?
I did look at the, we can go through this first.
Right, right. Okay.
I mean, that, that would be my view now, just from a, I'm sorry, just from a legality standpoint. If something did happen and nobody signed it and they come back to sue the town or something because we'd approved it, you know, the thing that comes to mind is that, well, you know, they, they filled out this form and they said, yeah.
You know, tell them, let them build it, what do you, this person's.
Special.
Or, or.
Correct.
And so we get sued by having a non-qualified certified.
This is for preliminary plans, right? So the preliminary plans?
Correct, no, definitive.
Definitive plan?
It's a definitive now.
Okay, so, yeah. So it's just an affidavit to go along with their documents that they were stamping and signing.
Right.
It's fine. Form E, is that supposed to stay in? But no, they don't need that for the.
No, the abutters, I mean, assessors don't use that. They have their own form, so.
And the Lakeville is supposed to know?
So.
So do we need to say a butters listed certified by the Lakeville? Is that supposed to stay in there?
Yes, I see it looked, it looks like it just took up the whole line. But it's in a butters list certified.
Okay, so that's it, that, that, that's those four words, okay, five words, then go. You just gave her the form E.
Yeah, like I said, they use their.
They use their own.
They use their own form.
Yeah, okay.
So what is their form called?
Uh, Request for a Butters List.
But so that's, that's the request the applicant fills out for them?
Yes.
Okay. So the Form E, Certified List of Abutters, is, so it names a subdivision, the undersigned being an applicant for approval, submits the following scheduled land and the subdivision lists the names of the adjoining owners and all the owners of the land within three hundred feet of the boundaries of land shown on the plan and indicating the address of each on a sketch in a separate list. And actually, so three hundred or five hundred? Is it supposed to be three hundred or five?
For subdivisions, it's five. For special permits, it's three.
Okay. So this form that's referenced is not the abutters, I mean, is not the assessor's certificate. This is something signed by the applicant saying that this is what? They're submitting as the certified abutters.
Yeah, that's not necessary. They get that from the assessors and it's stamped certified by. Yeah, that's not necessary, they get that from the assessors and it's stamped certified by the assessors.
Okay.
So.
So we don't need a Form E?
No.
So. Did you happen to check the whole document to make sure that it was not mentioned anywhere else, or?
Um, yeah, as far as I know, because it was only through this definitive plan.
Okay.
So we're sure of the game.
Oh, here it is, crossed over at the bottom too.
Yeah.
The Lakeville Assessor Certified List of Abutters.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Yep. Something's supposed to be. Front yard circle shouldn't be crossed out, right? That was just another.
Oh, I didn't do anything about that.
Okay. Just at the top with the X, the first where it said the front yard circle.
Oh, yeah.
And then upland circle was crossed out, but then front yard was too. Um. Town filing, definitive plan, yeah, the planning staff. So also. One contact plan.
Top of twenty.
So that's just the process.
Yeah, the twenty.
Right now is the one.
Four A, four C shows a circle.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if that's.
So it used to be an upland circle where it would require it to be upland area.
Front yard circle.
But it was changed to front yard circle, and that's what it says in our zoning bylaws.
Okay.
So it's no longer upland circle, it's front yard circle, so it's supposed to be, yeah, it's supposed to be the front yard circle.
I, it's not crossed out, it's the formatting lines telling you that they crossed out upland going through front yard, so it's not, it's not actually crossing it out. It's just the, it's the leader from the former telling you that they crossed out, so that's why what we think on the other line.
Oh, is that what it is?
It's crossed out, it's the leaders going through it.
Okay.
Cause it's highlighted, it's telling you that you started highlighting this and it goes back to the beginning.
Well, upland stays.
There you go, Don.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
I knew he was reviewing it, yeah, but it, yeah. Front, no, front, front yard stays.
Yeah.
The upland was crossed out, the front yard was added, so it was straight, the strike through was for the upland. So you have to make that A, uh, A front yard circle versus and upland circle.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
I, I, I kinda thought it had something to do with the, with. Words.
But, yeah. But you know which cross out is correct?
Cause it says strike through, and it says strike through, but then it says, then it says, the other one says formatted red, so it was added in the red formatted.
Okay, so then under one, it's just, now it's just, um, the process. And then review by town officials, one copy of the plan will then be distributed by planning staff to the conservation commission, board of health, department of public works, up in space, building department, fire department, police department, select board. One copy, and then it was repeated. So that just clears that up. That was already. Things that we had, cause that was your. That was Dan.
Yeah.
Oh, your comment.
Select board is to water allocation or through little and.
Oh, yeah.
Drops off.
Cause I thought there was one more thing. Carb cut? No, that's Dan, what do they do, that's remove of water allocation. That's it, so no and?
Not drain, no drain.
Location and earth removal, just move that and.
Yeah.
So the and goes between the select board.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, on E.
So the and has to go between out, water allocation, earth removal, right?
Yeah.
I'm here to see what happens.
So now, are you purposely crossing out all these forms? Cause it says G one and two, and then all the rest are crossed out, but I think we have to give them other options.
Yeah, well, this was crossed off. But I added it back in because that's right in the statute that you have to include those, so I, I don't know. If you had crossed them off, or the only one that was in there was performance bond.
Cause they had Form H.
Deposit of money or negotiable securities.
Yeah, and then. So I did have an H form in there.
What's the H form?
Which is. Actually, this is a release form. Forms of the, for the ways municipal services are provided by the performance bond or of surety dated and or by the covenant dated, reported. Have been completed, partially completed to satisfaction planning board to serve adequately. To there, oh my God, I can't even read this. And after renewing the law, it's shown on the plan, so this was the. Release of fund. Release form. Performance for the ways municipal services acquired, covenant dated, reported, registered in the main court, have been completed, partially completed to satisfaction. That's actually a release form.
Right, it's the period for completion in H one and H two may be extended by the planning board.
Okay. So that makes sense?
Mm-hmm. What's Form G?
G? So G one is a performance bond surety company, so that's the, to the surety.
Alright, so those are the two forms, right?
And then the G two is performance bond secured by deposit. Okay, so that's why, cause instead of, or deposit of money, see Form H, because it was G one and G two.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So you get rid of those two, okay.
Yeah. Deposit of money or negotiable securities. So now, what is the means for this deposit of money or negotiable securities besides? Performance bond secured by deposit or. Surety company? Is there another means that we?
I'm, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
So where it says, I think you added it in, a deposit of money or negotiable security?
Yeah, that's in the statute, that has to be the.
So what?
So is it saying that they're, they're doing the performance bond, and they're doing G one, G two, or they have to do a deposit of money or negotiable security, they must what? Give money to the.
So I think it's not an or, I think that's a description of what these forms are, because it's either a surety or a deposit. Right?
I don't know, before it was deposit of money, Form H, or negotiable security, Form I. We don't have those forms, or bank passbook, see Form J. So it's in the statutes, they have to have, they're either performance bond or they have to give money that, but we don't have any. Forms for that.
That's why it would have been great to have council's opinion on these.
I don't know, that one might have to be like a question mark if we have to.
Right. So. I guess, yeah, the question is, is forms G one and G two sufficient?
Performance bond.
Or do we need to add?
Well. But isn't that what G two is? G two is a security by deposit?
Yeah, one was the, uh, surety and one was deposit.
So I guess, yeah, we have to ask them if, I guess, town council, if the deposit of money or negotiable, negotiable security should be, should be G two. If the performance bond, I mean, I guess still, they're both performance bonds, but ones by deposit. Versus ones by getting a bond through a company.
Oh, yeah, the period of completion on H one and H two, but I've only done.
There's only H one, there's only H, so yeah, maybe you have to do Form H?
Yeah. Form H. Alright. And then moving on. Under recording.
Five copies?
Five copies.
The significance of the five is what, the individuals are committed to need.
And after the endorsement of the plan, the applicant is required to email a properly formatted PDF of the endorsed, and via email or other file sharing website into a box. Okay, Form H, that's the one. Set covenant. Subdivision show file with the planning board and building department, and then spell plan and tracing clause can strike through. Page twenty-six. Select board. Page twenty-seven, select board.
So it's supposed to be select board and DPW director, but again, it's that strike through showing, and it's going through it.
Right.
So then you're taking out super intensive highways and you're taking out select board, but you're leaving select board and DPW director.
Why is select board in there twice?
To review.
On twenty-seven.
I don't know. I think it's cause when you're reviewing, if you delete it, but then you wanna put it back in, it's gonna, it's gonna show it twice like that. Like if you delete it by accident. Unless you undo it.
So it needs to be select board again?
Yeah, just, just once.
So what do you want it to be, Joe?
No, it's right the way it is.
Okay.
So then.
DPW director. And is this comment from. On thirty-fourth, is that your comment or is that someone else's comment? Was that you, Michelle?
Oh, that's me, yeah.
It wasn't director, it was you, okay.
Because that was one of the items where I looked up guidelines for soil and water conservation in urbanizing areas, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, and there was no, nothing found, so. Um. It looked like it had been a place with mass, replaced with Massachusetts erosion and sediment control guidelines for urban and suburban areas.
Okay.
So that should be what that is replaced with. But this is one of those things where, um, wh- well, when we finally, so we're just doing a, a preliminary cleaning up of the rules and regulations because it hasn't been done in so long. And, um, hopefully we'll get the grant funding to have a consultant do the full. Revision. And that'll. Cause it really should reference current regulations, you know, and if those change, then this should update automatically with two of those.
And you, you did it again on forty-one, same thing, same, same, same form.
Yes, same thing, I couldn't find it.
DPW director, that's the four.
Yeah.
Correct, true, right? But the highway surveyor.
Yeah, you want DPW director, right?
Correct. Where, where are you looking?
H on page thirty-eight.
It's like all of the places.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, every time it said highway surveyor, it just replaced with DPW director. Cause we don't have a highway surveyor.
So forty-one.
It's weird.
Per day, same thing.
Select, this was.
Yeah, it says deleted board select, board select number, then it says select board, but it crossed it out, I don't know why.
Yeah, why is it crossed out?
It's not supposed to, I don't know why, if you look at what the act where it tells you, it says deleted board of selectmen. But then, I don't know why, it's not what, cross, doesn't make any, I don't know. It's correct, though.
Forty-one.
Alright, so that was all of those items? Okay. And so. We have set of rules and regulations, we've got this, the forms that town council should be reviewing. I guess we just have to say minus that Form E.
Form E.
And H one and H two.
Well, yeah, cause, so they should just only review Form H because it was. And then all those minor revisions we just went through. So it's forms, we don't have E, I guess we have. F, G one. G two.
D.
H. I've done it in order in this. A, B, C. And D, okay. No E, F, G, one, G two, and H. Okay, so do we want to make a conditional approval, approve the rules and regulations document with the, yes?
So can I ask why the board wants to add all the forms to the rules and regulations?
I think they were missing, I think that's the problem.
So they don't have to, I, I looked at some surrounding towns, some. In some towns, they are included, and some they're not, but if you include these, that means anytime you make any change, you have to have a public hearing. And. The bill for this is four hundred dollars, so it's just kinda.
Well, don't we have to do a public hearing to change any of the rules and regulations?
The rules and regulations, not the forms. Right now. And actually, Middleborough just re- recently removed theirs, and they're separate on the website, they're not in the latest. So you just might wanna consider not doing that just at this time, just to pass through, because.
I think we should still have the forms, so, like, I think it just helps check all those boxes and make sure things are not missed, especially if they're mentioned in the rules and regs. But if it, if. If it makes sense to keep them separate, that's fine, but I think they should still be. Part of it.
So what do you mean by the public hearing?
So, according to the statute, rules and regulations of the planning board, you have to have a public hearing if you change them. That's just that document and anything in that document. However, the forms and the applications is something that can be changed just by the vote of the board. Once you include them in that, you can't do that anymore.
If you wanna change a form?
Anything on the form, you can't change it.
So we could still approve the forms, separate, separate from the rules and regulations?
Yes.
Well, or look at it as approve the rules and regulations tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as documented and just leave it.
So, I mean, just the forms, I looked through them and, like, did you feel that our forms are so bad that you had to change them, or I'm just a little confused about?
I think we only had three forms.
Sorry?
There was only a few, and they seemed, yeah, they seemed kind of inadequate.
Yeah, I agree, but I don't feel that this is an upgrade. I mean, before we got so slammed and before Mark left, I kinda did some research on some towns. And. I think a concise form, we just did the ZDA one, everything listed, checklist attached, would be better. And I think a concise form, we just did the ZBA one, everything listed, checklist attached, would be better. That's just my opinion. I did ask Amy about having something notarized, and she said that she felt that was kind of an onerous requirement. And I checked with the town clerk, and she said that she would not be doing that, it would be like a conflict. So, I mean, something this major, changing every single thing, should kind of be more like a collaboration because other departments are involved.
So, so, so covenants and different documents are not notarized? Because I thought even the example from Bella Way that we had in an email, that was notarized. Because I even noticed, because my name is listed and it's notarized, even though I haven't said it.
That is, but like an application form, those aren't notarized.
Well, I don't...
A, B, and C. Like, for instance, Form C1, certificate of approval of a definitive plan, like, we do this already. It doesn't have a form number. But that's that lengthy, lengthy document created after the plan is approved. And then how to disapprove.
Well, so, I mean, we, we've been asking town council, can we get this form, that form for different instances? And that, we absolutely should have those on file.
Right.
So you're just saying you don't like these, this version? Do you have other versions?
I haven't had time, but like I said, I feel like it's, it's kind of my personal goals to try to update the forms. But I think it, it should be like a collaboration, what would you, you guys like to see on an application? What would be helpful for the office to have on the application? And then if departments are involved, what would they want to see? You know, like the forms that are stamped in by the town clerk.
That's fine, I just wish you had brought that up prior to this public hearing because we've had this discussion so many times prior, so it seems late in the game. But, um... So did, so, so did Amy even get these forms?
I don't know, I, like I said, I, I reached out to Nate, I did not hear back from him.
So you want to work on forms on your own to come up with something, but you haven't had time?
Right.
And you don't like these ones that...
Well, I just think if you're gonna upgrade them, change the forms, it should be an upgrade and not just one okay form to another okay form.
But I, do you think it's better to have something in place rather than nothing?
Well, we have something in place.
But it seems to be lacking, and you agree?
Yeah, I mean, we still have application forms that applicants use. And then just, and I did speak, like I told you, I did speak briefly with Amy at the last meeting, and some of our forms, like this Form H, we have it as a Form F, she did say that there are some standardized, standardized ones, so I would want to check with her, so is the release form, is that a standard form, is it an F or is it an H?
I even feel like if we get, you know, approved for the consultant with the attorney, that's something that maybe we can even have them know this stuff. Because, you know, if Kathy can't get to it, and if town council's struggling with getting it back to us too.
So do we continue this?
So I want to approve the rules and regulations, get that done, if, you know, we've already gone through that. The forms, we can just put on the next agenda and...
So do we just approve these and don't touch the forms now?
Well, yeah, you just approve them, this is all that you have anyway. That was just like something you wanted to add to it.
Okay.
But, so once again, we're approving rules and regulations, and now the forms don't match up to what's in there. Which, that just doesn't seem to be...
Can you continue the hearing?
But, but until when, if, if it's, you don't like the forms, but you don't have time to work on them, so...
Yeah, well, you have to decide, do you want those forms included in this, or are they gonna be separate?
Can't you just say that we include the rules and regulations? With the exception of the forms that have...
Yes, yes, we can, we can, we can do that, we can approve the rules and regulations, it's just a question of, now we have no form.
Forms references, the reference that aren't approved.
Correct. Still, which is one of the hopes of getting these forms.
But the forms are already in here before, right, those Form Designations?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we, we cleaned up a couple of them.
But not really, because...
I mean, most of them, I think, are right. Like the, about as long, all right, so that one's gone. The Form A, the Form B, the Form C, those are all still right.
We need to add me in there.
I know the covenant one, that one, I, I think in there it's a D, and I think that's what we call it. But then again, that one might be the one that's the Form F, I don't know.
So if we had, if we had to update this again to fix the form lettering, would we have to have a public hearing there?
Well, I, I think as long as we don't put them as part of the rules and regulations, and just approve them as forms, is what she's saying. We don't need a public hearing for them, in that situation.
Kathy, you're the one who's gonna update these forms? Or was it?
Well, I think a lot of them, like, these, I feel like the legal, more the legal forms, not the applications, those, town council has done already a couple. Maybe a few. So I think that's just, just going by the forms that they created for us, although I think one of them is in there. I think it was, yeah, they just did...
The surety?
Yeah, that one, and I think that she has said that if, so it's, if it's a different form, then a different form of surety, then it's a different form. But I'm sure it's very similar, just with some different wording somewhere in there.
I mean, I still want to address these forms. I guess I'm not sure how, like, not tonight, we'll put it on a future agenda. It's, it's getting late, let's just, so we'll continue the forms. But let's approve the rules and regulations if somebody would like to make a motion to adopt these provisions.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the Planning Board Rules and Regulations as revised.
With the noted?
With the noted, with the noted changes, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And as far as the forms, we'll continue that to, let's put it on the first meeting in September.
And Kathy, can you, um, would you go, if you are going through the forms, I know time is tight, but provide just some initial feedback, just so we can, I guess, as a board, we can kind of discuss, like, what your concerns are with that.
So, do you feel the priority is like the forms or the applications? Pretty basic, but the forms are the more important thing? Those are the ones that are being questioned in, in the legalness?
Right, yeah, I, I think those are important, but I also feel like, for you anyways, give some of your feedback as to what your concerns are too, just so, you know, for the next meeting that we have in September to discuss it, that we can kind of, you can speak to those type areas, and we can kind of discuss, because at some point, we're gonna have to have the council review that too, so... And just make sure it's in compliance. Because then that, that way we can have a good discussion on where we go with the forms. So, and I, I think that will help tee us up, tee us up for, you know, you know, where to go with the forms and, and your concerns from being, you know, in the, you know, in the midst of all of this.
Okay, so, does someone want a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the review of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, number five, current zoning versus use map discussion update. Do we have any?
We forgot to ask the public if they want to make that. They don't want to do, you're good, all right, sorry.
Oh, sorry, it was a public hearing.
Why now?
No, try close.
We're lucky she's not asleep.
Yeah.
That's all right. Highly fascinating.
Yeah, sure.
You're kind. So we've discussed looking at current zoning versus use. One note that I did come across was just from looking at the minutes from the Bella Way subdivision was that there is a residential restriction on Bella Way, so when we look at current zoning versus use, might as well zone that residential instead of...
Yep.
This, this, not industrial, is this, or is it?
Uh, that property.
It's business.
It's business, not industrial.
Yeah, so, yeah, so those residential should, if we look at it, those should be zoned residential as well. Um, any other questions, comments, updates? We haven't really gotten any further with that. We'll push that out a month, I know we've got a bunch of stuff lately. So the second meeting in...
Is this related to our little...
Yes.
Tour of the...
Yes.
Of the United...
Yeah, yeah.
So first zoning discussion out to 9/26. And then... Item number six, planning board goals. This was just to put it back in here. Just, do we want to continue it since it is so late?
Yeah, we can continue it.
Okay, so do you want to continue it to September 26th as well? Or should we do it to the 12th?
Oh, it's only in Jennifer's thoughts, so, yeah.
So far, just, um, five Harding?
No, he was a month. That is a month, that's the month, sorry, that's the month.
Yeah, so he's September 12th.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we should be able to go through it pretty quick, yeah.
Okay, so...
That shouldn't be that bad, because if you have a hearing, you'll be able to do it.
So September 12th for the planning board goals, and then number seven, administrative update, is that you, Kathy?
That's me.
Okay.
So 43 Main Street, the peer review obviously not done. And I spoke to John, and he, he would probably continue unless you would want him to come in for any additional information.
As they continue.
All right, so we'll chat to him.
Yeah, I, I think...
Yeah, continue until peer reviews.
Yeah. Yeah.
Done.
Uh, 2 and 4 Bedford Street, the peer review is due, oh, it came in today.
You're a flaw.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and then, so Kathy, I know we used to have process whenever there was communication between you and town council or you with a peer review, can you just put the chair and vice chair on the emails? So that we're in the loop, please. And so that's everything for that?
No, actually, so, um, I felt, last time they appeared, the board didn't continue the hearing, so it's gonna have to be re-advertised. So just for your information, looking at a, uh, ten and a day of 9/12 for that also.
For which one?
2 and 4 Bedford Street.
2 and 4 Bedford Street.
Oh, we can continue that. That wasn't, was it not continued for a reason or was it just...
Like, you did the peer review, and then I think you just, like, went to the next item.
Yeah, because I thought it was just approving the peer review, I didn't realize it was, okay. So, we have to continue that till September 12th?
Well, I have to re-advertise it, but I'm thinking that, that'll be the date that will...
So 2, 4, and Harding on the same day? And then we have meeting minutes.
I had reviewed, and... 13, if I didn't have any, um, any changes to...
Oh, I had one, I had one.
You have one on this one?
Yep. Page 4, second.
13 for the fifth.
Uh, the long one, uh, June 13th. And page 4, second paragraph down, eliminate the precinct. The second, it wasn't eliminate the precinct street egress, it was the second one, because obviously the street is coming on the precinct, but there was an egress from the development as well.
Right, right.
So it was eliminate the second. E precinct, precinct, street egress for safety. So that was the only minor edit I had.
Um, and 2/5, I didn't have anything. That was a very short.
That was a long one.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we, does someone want a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Thursday, June 5th Planning Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the June 13th Planning Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's that?
Okay, one thing. Okay, and our next meeting is August 22nd at the Lakeville Police Station. Any other business? Did you have anything you'd like to ask, add, request?
Question?
You good?
We're here this whole time.
You didn't say, I don't believe you for that.
We're here, so...
Come on, here we go.
Come on, who did you choose?
What do you have, Ian?
Why not, man?
I have a lot.
Do you?
No.
Same, same as last time?
Same as last time.
Oh, come up and just state your name and address.
Should I even talk about, I mean, if you have something to say, but, I mean, it's up to you.
Do it after you're...
Um... Maybe I'll hold.
Okay.
What do you want to tell your, what do you got, situation?
Yeah.
Cool.
Um, it's just a question of where to kind of go next.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I'll come up. Um, Ian Ronzke, 13 Bernard's Way. So... I guess I'm just, just going over, um, I'm just questioning where we should probably, I should go next as far as, um... Possibly placing a lien against 109 Bedford.
109 Bedford, oh, so is that the 40B development?
The new development.
Okay.
Um... I have spoken to, um, someone at 40B in mass housing. Should be getting a call back tomorrow regarding that situation. But I believe he was going to reach out to Attorney Michael Holshana, who is the attorney for that project. There may be a question of putting a stop order on it.
Okay.
At this point.
Have you notified any?
I do.
Have you notified anybody in town as well?
Well, that's what my question is. So who do I need to notify, um, in town as far as where we're kind of at with this?
Would you go to our legal counsel, but she may say, that's your problem, not my problem.
So, so we really can't, she couldn't use town council?
No, but she, should she be aware of it?
She, well, I think her question is, what does she do at this point? Because she's reached out to different agencies.
Yeah, because we've got a lot of kind of reels in motion right now, however...
So, I mean, zoning board is the governing authority for 40B.
Yep.
So Kathy is the contact at zoning board.
Okay.
Is the zoning enforcement aware?
I don't believe so yet.
So definitely, um, email or contact zoning enforcement.
So zoning enforcement?
Yeah.
How about me?
Yeah, that is me.
That's you.
Hi, Jack. So...
Okay.
It's not me. I would start there?
Yeah, I'd start there.
Start there, okay. All right. Yeah, because there's a lot going on, and, um, a lot of different avenues that are being sought out at this point to kind of force the hand, so, unfortunately. Uh, no. But I am kind of the, um, would you say Joan of Arc of it? So I'm taking the lead on it, because there is one other that was a month prior to me, and then there's another one brewing right now. Yeah. So, it's not looking great. That's all.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, I wouldn't...
There's not a whole lot, because I know with 40B, um, it's, it's a whole different other story.
Right.
But, because my project was also, not, not me specifically, 40B, but my project was 40B. This now, new project is 40B, so it kind of flows. As far as not leading up to the original application that was filed on...
And have you gone, gone to ZBA? Have you? Because, so, for example, like, so Miss, the gentleman who came...
Yes.
In the beginning of our hearing.
Yes.
At our meeting. He had been in contact, you know, over the years multiple times. Now that I'm chair, I kind of figured, let's bring him here and see what I can do to help, I mean, obviously all we can do is listen and... Now that I'm chair, I kind of figured, let's bring him here and see what I can do to help, I mean, obviously, all we can do is listen and send, you know, a memo and, and request that something is done about it, but we have to trust that that, you know, gets done, and that's what I'm hoping, you know, for you, if you can be vocal.
Yes.
Reach out to zoning board.
Okay.
Because they are the permitting authority and, and let them know. And, um, because, you know, we don't want to see people having issues and, you know...
No, and there's quite a few.
Unemployment hardships from developments, that's not good.
No, and then building exactly the same here, and now potentially having another twelve. People have the same issue that we're having. I mean, it's kind of rawning our town one condo at a time. At this point, and that's how it's kind of playing out, so unfortunately, unfortunately.
Sorry to hear that you have a number of time. Is there anything else?
No, I think that's it. I mean, I think you guys want to go home, right?
Yeah, life is good.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the, we'll see that planning board being...
Jerk.
Jerk.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.